I'm gonna call the meetings to order at six o'clock.
I'm gonna speak to the budget, Molly.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so, do you want me to read the warrant article or can you just summarize the warrant article? Alright, I'll summarize it. So, Article one would be an operating budget of four million eight hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And if defeated, the default would be four million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This is worded the exact same way as last year, which is different numbers. And also, it included a little time target, which is right in front of Josh's computer. This is the same exact file that we reviewed in the December meeting. So it is an increase of two hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars or five point one two percent over the current operating budget. In here, we've listed the salary changes. Nobody's negotiating, so the teachers would be second track per the CBA. Any non-union employee would be a three percent increase. We do have some provision for retirement in case one chooses to retire. So we know our teachers will stay forever. We had some changes in special education. There's the transportation is a two point nine five percent increase for first students. Health insurance change is a nine point nine percent GMR or warranty maximum rate for health, and dental is four point seven. The SAU assessment increase, that is based off of what we voted on in the joint board in October. And then, we just had a decrease in the facilities and maintenance because the roof was this year. And so, that falls off next year. That is pretty much the major drivers. I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
No, I don't. I think it's everything hasn't changed since we talked about it in December, so.
Yeah, you guys worked really hard on that.
Did that summarize it?
Let's turn it over if there's any public questions on the budget.
What's contacted service?
Oh, sorry, I should say contracted services. That's my spelling here.
Okay. That dropped quite a bit. So, uh...
That's like school, school bus type stuff?
Well, the school bus would be under transportation.
Yep, that dropped too.
School sake.
Well, so the transportation would have gone down for special education transportation. First student went up two point ninety-five percent, but transportation includes special transportation and regular transportation. So it's a net decrease because special ed went down, but first student went up, but not as much as the special ed went down. So contracted service is how the book...
That, that particular significant decrease was a nursing contract change. So we're no longer, we no longer have that nursing contract that we had before. So that's why it's a decrease.
Great. I mean, that's a good...
And yeah, and we're still meeting all of our student needs without that contract, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ambulance is right next door.
Right. We still have a nurse on staff.
Great.
So, the next two warrant articles are the ones that we've had forever. We currently have a balance of sixty-five thousand one hundred and forty-five in each, the special ed and the building needs funds. Typically, we put in ten thousand in every year. But on the draft, we put a bunch of X's because I wanted to hear your feedback on what you wanted, if you want to continue the spend, increase, decrease, not fun at all.
Yeah, so, for Kensington, our recommendation is when you're looking at a special ed trust fund, to have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as your buffer. Right now, that it would be the cost if we had to send one student with significant needs out of district, and that, that would cover one, one student for the cost of the year. That was, that's cost of specialized instruction, any equipment that they would need, and then also transportation. So, again, we built this five years ago, so it's building that up. So again, it's forward thinking. And then with our, your building and maintenance trust fund, we'd look at a recommendation of about a hundred and fifty thousand. That would be if there's any major roof leaks, your boiler would go. Again, that would give us the ability to not have to halt school or look at conducting school elsewhere if we didn't have heat, or if we had major leaks in our roofs in the building. So those are the two goals that we'd recommend that you would look to get to for those two trust funds. And again, I believe we've put ten thousand dollars in each of those funds, since the first year was a little bit more, but in the last years, it's been ten thousand dollars that we've put into the, both of those funds to continue to try and build them up to a place that we're comfortable.
With the goal of the special ed being so much higher than the building and maintenance, would you ever look at doing fifteen and five for those two?
It's totally up to the board, absolutely. You know, you're, yes, you could do whatever you want. And again, it's however you put it on, so not only you have to pick a number, but how you want to place it on the ballot. Because the first warrant article, depending on what you have at your unreserved fund balance, that's what gets, that's what gets funded first. So if you did put fifteen thousand dollars into your special ed trust fund and wanted five, and you only had sixteen thousand dollars, your special ed would be fully funded, and then you only put a thousand dollars into your, into your maintenance fund. But I, I mean, where special ed is at such a higher risk and, and, you know, principal rule has done a really nice job with, with the facilities and looking at plans and being proactive.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I would support that, but that, both are so inevitables of, you know, so that, it's great that we've started it and we're building it up.
Yeah.
And we're at sixty-six thousand now for each.
Correct.
I just wanted to comment on that.
Yes, yeah.
Except that we added another potential one, the technology trust fund. So, this year specifically, we saw an increase to access points, through wireless access points. They kind of reached the end of life across the SAU, so the big, to some of our smaller districts. So, Chris, Jason Hill is our technology director, on possibly what the goals are for a technology trust fund so that we don't have these big spikes.
Yeah, so what we see is you, about every five to six years, you're paying for your new access points, you're paying for your switching, your cabling, and anything associated with the wiring into those to continue to have wireless access. You know, we saw, I think, a bill of twenty-three thousand dollars this year for our access points. So our recommendation for Kensington would be a five thousand dollar buffer to start out into that trust fund, so that in five years, you can just pull that out. And our goal is, when we did our, our technology audit, is that we'd like, we don't want to see that up and down every, you know, every five years. So that would keep it stable, you take it out of your trust fund, and if there's surplus, then you could use it for other needs every, every five years. But build that trust so that your budget can stay the same. And Mr. Hills has done a nice job working with all of our principals about doing a hardware or computer rotation schedule for both staff and students, so again, you're not buying two hundred computers one year, and then you're buying thirty the next year, having those ups and downs that we can keep it consistent. So those are the three warrants that we have, that we propose. It's up to you whether you want to fund them and how much you want to fund them and in what order.
Molly, do we know about yours past and whether we've done anything different than ten for the, for the two trust funds? I mean, my, just, my gut would say to stay with the same, what we did last year, a ten, ten. And if we're gonna ask for more for the other one, then it's a ten, ten and a five.
We've had ten the last three years, in each of them.
Okay.
The very first year we started, we put twenty-five thousand in each.
Yeah, I was just pulling up the, um, we were running log.
So you want to start a new fund for IT?
Uh, for technology. We'd cover anything with technology.
And you said if there was a surplus, you could use it for other things later on.
Yep.
Why don't you just put the five thousand in the maintenance? And use that if there's an emergency?
Uh, it was...
So make that, instead of ten and ten, do fifteen and ten.
Um, because that would not meet the needs of the warrant. It has to be specific to what you're using it for. Maintenance would be your overall building, access points would be technology, would not be considered a, a maintenance type of issue.
I think he meant, one reason, other things, other technology things, not basically, not just random things that need to disconnect.
Yeah.
Okay. Start another account, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think they always make sense. I think they always make sense.
We're governed by DRA and how we can fund those different warrants and what they're specifically used for.
Alright.
And that, that's why we had to, if we went back some years and you did a capital improvement fund, then you could use it on multiple things.
Okay, because IT's pretty expensive, or can be, because I've seen the police budget.
Yep.
It's crazy.
Yep.
We do have a, what you would call a spike this year and the year that we've proposed, because we have twenty-two thousand in for wiring and then an additional ten for hard, for devices. So this is one of those spike years.
Yes, so the initial twenty-five thousand was on the twenty-twenty. And then, it's like there's been a few additions since then. So it's already been ten except for that additional one.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess what's sticking out to me is the fact that we're talking about two hundred and fifty for a target on one of them. If we do ten every year, that's gonna take a while to get there, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like there's ample money floating around to put into it anyways, but just thinking out loud.
I think where the, the selectmen are squeaking a little because everything is crazy this year because of the assessment.
Yeah.
I, I would stick with the ten, ten and five. And, and maybe later on, when people get used to paying their taxes at a higher rate, then you can...
No, I'm, yeah.
You can jam them for, you know, fifteen or fifteen in each account.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting this would be the appropriate year to do so. I'm just thinking about, if we've done something for the last few years and the target is that, you know, in the future, years to come, we're gonna have to think about how we can better get that target.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I would think would be to shift, shift the money.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, ten, ten and five, so it's reasonable to me.
Yeah. If we want to go with that, we...
Just need a motion, right, Molly?
Well, we need to close the public hearing.
Right, in, in our regular meeting, we'll need a motion to go over that.
Oh, okay. That happens in a regular meeting?
Just in the, you can just make a motion, just what we're gonna take.
Yep.
So we make that motion in the regular meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Are we okay to close?
If there's no other comments, we definitely can. Good. Yeah, so you can close it.
Um, don't have to make a motion to that.
Yep.
Okay, make a motion to close the public hearing at six fourteen?
Second.
All in favor? Right?
Right, now you can open us up and...
Okay, make a motion, start the regular meeting at six fourteen? Is that okay? Do we have the same minute?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm gonna make a motion to, I don't know if I need to make a motion, uh, just open public input, also at six fourteen. We can start with public input if we want.
Hi.
Hi.
Did you get my email?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Skip Hill. I'm, I'm the president of the Kensington Fire Association. This is my second round with that, but whatever. I've lived in town for forty-three years.
Wow.
And I was an active firefighter until I was sixty-five, so that was five years ago. So, I'm kind of, uh, just doing the administrative stuff now. Because I got the aches and pains and the oltrin and all that stuff. Anyway. Did, did the board or the school get a, a letter from, you got it, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Allison, right?
Yes.
I, I sent it to you if, if, if you saw the email. I know it was late in the day.
Yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted some input. I went to the meeting, uh, I think it was Tuesday night, Monday or Tuesday night, I don't know. I've been over there two nights in a row. Anyway, um, do you understand what they're doing?
I'm not, I'm, and these guys probably don't know either, so.
Oh, okay, well, we, uh, the, this area is in the historic district of Kensington. That was set up by the Kensington Heritage Commission, okay? They wanna propose, they wanna send, uh, to the state of New Hampshire for consideration on January twenty-ninth. It's like, uh, this is pretty like, short notice. And, uh, I, I, I think that's their fault. But anyway, January twenty-ninth, they wanna submit the, the buildings in the historic district for consideration in the National Register of Historic Places. There's so many alphabet soups here, it's crazy, but, um, what, what that does is it allows, there's a lot of people that are okay with it. And, and, um, they, the, the commit, the Heritage Commission says, which, which I think the president or chairman or whatever, is Lynn Monroe. She says at the meeting that there's no repercussions for, for doing that to the property owners. But, I'm just a little hesitant myself. But I can't speak alone for the fire department because we haven't, I haven't formed a, a consensus yet. I've, I've sent out the email about, like, should we object to being considered? Or just go ahead and go along with it? The school probably doesn't really matter. So you'll probably, and that's just a guess, just like I said, no, no objection. But I, it, if you know what they're trying to do with this letter and you understand it, I, I just wanted to get your feelings on it, that's all.
Would the school be included as one of those buildings?
Yeah. Yes, it's, it's pretty much from the church, uh, I think down the Trundle Bed Lane.
Okay.
And across the street and on the other side.
So Skip, I don't know what that means. I read through the letter.
You did?
And I don't like...
Yeah, it's tough. It's tough reading.
Like, all, my, my frame of reference is driving into some towns and you'll see, you know, the historic district sign, and then you'll see the other one on the other side.
That would be Exeter.
Okay, great. Like, what is, what is the, what does that mean? I don't understand the implications of the buildings.
Okay, there's, there's, actually, in Kensington, there is a historic district apparently. I, I didn't even know that. But there's no committee or separate entity for the historic district. But Jill Pace, the select, uh, the selectman, said that he served on the Exeter Historic District Committee. And, uh, it, it is different. Everything, if you wanted to paint your color, uh, paint your house red.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's, and it's yellow. You have to go to the Historic Commission first, and then you go to the Planning Board, and then you gotta jump through all these hoops.
I would do an historic house.
According to a couple of other people that, that have some ties in Exeter and Kensington, the Historic Committee, or whatever you call it in Exeter, is kind of a nightmare for the property owners in that area.
Yeah.
That would be, yeah, that, I mean, I guess that's my biggest, having lived...
We were told, I think Tuesday night, Jesus.
I think it was Monday.
Monday night, Monday night, yeah, sorry. By Lynn Monroe, that there was no repercussions to, to doing this. But I'm a little nervous when you get going into a federal agency. So personally, I'm gonna vote no for the Kensington Fire Department or Association. The, the, the fire department is not owned, the building is not owned by the town. It's owned by the association. The town supposedly leases the building for a dollar a year. I gotta submit them a bill because I don't think they've paid in the last ten years. So, we as an association have to decide. So I, like I said, I sent out an email instead of having a quick meeting, because this deadline's like, they're, I think they're asking too much too fast. But, um, again, that's my opinion. So, I, my feeling is to, uh, because that building is only on a half acre. I don't, it's, it doesn't have a lot of future in the fire service, the way it's set up. And we may have to do something about that later on. And, and the ideas are to, uh, either, to donate it back to the town. There'll be no money exchanged, make it into a parking lot for the library and the school or whatever. You know, whatever the town wants to do with it, that's not up to us. But, um, and, and we move on and, and build a more modern facility for the fire service. So, so all, I, I don't want any restrictions on that being, being said. So we, I, I'm voting to object to being listed as a historical place.
But, yeah, my only frame of reference is I, I lived in a historic home, and we had to live with a broken window for almost a year because we couldn't do anything without getting permission. But I don't, it'd be interesting, that's my only, it was not in this state, it was in a different state, so, um...
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to hear if there are other schools that are considered historic buildings and what that looks like for them.
I mean, what's the, what's official address here? Is it one twenty-six?
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two?
With my understanding on the letter, that would be nominated on the twenty-ninth, and then after that, then the property owners could accept or deny the nomination. So I don't think we have to make a decision before the twenty-ninth. Is that correct?
And we could be excluded, but the rest of the, like, area could be still historic area.
And I guess that's maybe, just wanna check the wording of the letter.
Yeah.
Says the nomination would happen, but property owners still...
Does anybody know when the original building was built?
It's a really good question, too.
Nineteen fifty-five, and I believe the doors opened in fifty-six.
So, okay, the, the fire station was built in fifty.
So does every one of these addresses on, on the letter get the ability to vote? So, fast forward, you could have fifty percent that are part of it.
They get to object if they want to.
Okay, okay.
These are all going to the state, uh, the State Historic Commission, and they're going to, uh, council, sorry. And they're going to nominate these properties to the National Register of Historic Places. And then, if that passes, then the property owners can apply for a plaque. If you notice, there's one on the church, the congregation church. Maybe the Universalist Church as well, and the town hall.
Alright, but you...
Stuff like that.
Are there any other benefits besides the plaque?
No, not really.
Well, that's, that's the thing I'm trying to...
But there is a limitation, um, if you read into the letter. If, if any federal funds are being used for grants or anything, and, and we try to get as many federal grants as we can for, for, uh, equipment and training and fire apparatus and stuff like that. So we, we don't want any, uh, bumps in the road.
Yeah, it sounds like there's more risks than, or more, more cons than pros.
It says that owners of private properties nominated to the National Register of Historic must be given an opportunity to concur in or object to listing in accordance to the...
Correct, yeah.
It's unclear, I guess, as to whether or not that needs to happen before the twenty-ninth.
I, I think, again, thanks for bringing that up. I think you're correct. But I'm feeling the pressure. So I could be, I could be wrong with that. So if you don't think there's any pressure, I mean, there is, so we wait and see if we're nominating.
Yeah, I mean, what I would like to know is like, what are, what are the risks, right? Like, if we, if we have an issue where we break a window, or we have a door issue, and we have to go through more hoops in order to get the approvals that we might be able to address normally as a school board, that to me would sound like that's a risk, that's an extra hurdle we gotta get through. I just, I don't know what those are. I get the idea of it, but I really don't understand what the true risks are. It'd be nice to know what they are.
Other schools in New Hampshire.
I mean, it's a brick building, it's, it's more modern looking than some of the houses down here, the Grange Hall and the churches. So, I mean, I, I think...
But likely the steel doors that we put on the front don't meet the historic aesthetic code, as I guess.
Well, they're already there, so tough, tough beat.
They're already there, but that's a point of, you know, you want to deal with it.
But I mean, if you have a, a window or a door problem, it's like, you just, you gotta change it.
Oh, I'm telling you, it was a nightmare.
Well, unless you, this school, but this building is also very flexible every single year. You have to put up walls in between classrooms and make more classroom. I mean, this building has to be flexible.
That's interior, I don't think. I, I think the historic is more exterior, but I could be wrong about that.
Anything you can see from the outside, I think.
So I'm, I'm just, I, I just wanted a discussion, uh, get you thinking about it, and you've got the letter, so... Let's go with the flow, I guess, and see what happens.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the thought process, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else about the fire department while, while we want to talk about?
You, we have, I feel like we have a good rela, working relationship with you all and Becky, yeah, so.
If, if you don't, please contact us and we'll work it out.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, no, thanks for explaining that to us.
Thanks for your help. There's a lot of words in reading here.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I couldn't write that.
Any other public input? It will stay open until six forty-five. Otherwise, we'll move, and it will stay open. Otherwise, it will move on to approval of the December thirteenth public meeting minutes.
I just had a one correction on page two, under five point two with the draft budget. On the paragraph at the bottom, Mr. Enteski reporting on the cost of health insurance. Looking at how many would a lack coverage, and I prefer that I anticipated for paraprofessionals rather than noted just to make that not a definitive number, but just anticipated number.
Because all you were doing were asking for kind of what their thoughts would be, right? Yeah.
Yeah, because it wasn't a commitment necessarily, but just, yeah.
Got it.
Otherwise, I can make a motion to approve the December thirteenth public meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and now the December thirteenth non-public minutes? Anything? Okay. Make a motion to approve those as is?
Second.
All in favor? Let's scroll back and forth. Do we wanna skip to business and financials? Molly, benefit?
Alright, so including your board pack is a current year financial. So since last month, we did add a check of forty thousand dollars. I did put on here what that's for, so, um, we had some special ed services for food day and, um, behavioral services. For, we had some changes in encumbrances, um, bossing phone books, and the duct work for, and motor repair for facilities. And then we adjusted the foot service costs. Do you have any questions? Alright, and then, the other thing is, we just want a motion... And then, the other thing is, we just want a motion to, on what you wanna take out. Probably do it in two motions, one for the operating budget.
Okay.
Two would be the, what you want for the trust fund.
Okay. So, the first motion is just to approve the budget. As presented for the delivery session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second is, I'll attempt to make this motion. Uh, I make a motion to, uh, fund the trust fund balances for special ed. First, for ten thousand, uh, building and maintenance for ten thousand, and then the technology for five thousand.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So, what I'll do is I will finalize these in the portal. And then I will email them to Chris and she'll print them out if you guys just wanna kind of sign them.
Perfect.
Probably early next week.
Okay.
If you have, like, Tuesday or Wednesday, and then we can get them on post.
Great.
Then you just need that signature page, right?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, and then there, there, that's the same, that's gonna go with your warrant, so you can either, you can sign it now or later, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Take a breath. Um, okay, we're gonna dump back up to committee reports, policy committee.
Alright, so, full disclosure, I was not able to make the last policy committee meeting. But I did, uh, talk with Heather on Monday and got, um, a full recap from her. What you don't see listed on the, on the policy committee brief is the fact that there was more discussion around the joint board policy manual. That, as it stands, has either twelve or thirteen policies that are included within it. Those would be specific to joint board operation. They do mirror many of the policies that we already have for the school board level.
Okay, did it not exist before?
It, it has not existed, so this is new.
Okay.
There's been minor tweaks to account for the fact that it's going to be applicable to the joint board.
Okay.
And I expect within the next day or so, ideally this week, the joint board materials are going to come out for the meeting that I think is on the twenty-second. And the reason why, uh, the plan is to send them out a little bit earlier is because of all the, the thirteen joint board, procedures that are going to be included within it. So, to give somebody, or to give the other board members a few extra days to take a look at them. Really, I think when you take a look at it, there's not gonna be too much that's earth shattering there. Really, again, just minor tweaks to account for the fact that it's a joint board policy manual instead of something that's tied directly to the school boards.
Okay.
Outside of that, there was, uh, discussion on approval of handbooks. So, you see within the materials, there's a very small policy that is, has some adjustments made there. It, uh, it includes language now that it says that the handbook has to conform to board policies, just to make that clear. And then there's also the ability for the superintendent to ensure that board members have access to the handbooks, uh, when, when they're ready. Um, and that is not a new one, that's a revision, which is why you see a red line. Now, for the, the next procedure, attendance and truancy. This one is new, even though marked within the brief, it's marked as a revision of existing. Again, new procedure that, that tracks, uh, current regulation. Up top or, or at the beginning of the procedure, you'll see the, um, the definitions clearly labeled. And it, so you have the clear definitions at the front, you have, uh, the rest of the detail throughout. And then one of the, I believe it's the last paragraph, there's a, there's, uh, making a note that even though, uh, somebody may not meet the definition of being truant, that the superintendent will have the ability to, um, discuss or a- address any chronic absenteeism of a particular student. So, basically, kind of a catch-all, to say that even though a student may not meet the defined terms, there's still the ability to devise a plan and work through any issues with that student.
Those have only two, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, those are only two.
Do you wanna, I mean, do we have to make a motion to approve those too? Yeah.
Alright, so I will make the motion to approve policy CHCA, approval of handbooks as revised, and policy JH, attendance and truancy as drafted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Josh, do you know if the planned absence form that's referenced in the attendance and truancy policy is something that's, um, attached to this policy, or if it's something that each individual school?
Get to that? I, I don't, Becky, I can take that.
Just taking into that, never mind.
Heather, Heather's gonna work with building principals to create, uh, SAU sixteen common form.
Is there a little different between, like, planned college visits versus, so, okay.
So, that was a catch-all for all, but she's gonna get input from all principals to do that.
Um, safety and security, we have not, I think we meet this month?
February twenty-second.
February, February, just kidding. Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
Um, yeah, the, the most recent, um, group there is the, the committee by the SCAD. And it's a draft of the three sixteen evaluation that Dr. Aspel will get. And if you, um, I've been tasked to get any feedback from you guys. It's, I just got it too yesterday, and I don't have a meeting until February. If you wanna take your time and you pass it on to Chris and then pass it to me, because I know it's, it's a lot.
Okay.
I didn't have any comments on it, um, the other, one other board had, you know, just some sort of little, little things. So, I think it's pretty thorough. But if you guys wanna, over the next couple of weeks, take.
Okay. Jumps out of us.
Jumps out at you.
Okay.
The stakeholders that'll be taking it are the, um, if that's, I don't know if it's on the top paragraph there. But it's the, um, the, all of our colleagues, so the senior leadership team and all of the other support staff in the, um, SU sixteen office. And then the, um, principals and I believe it's a, um, like a, like either the junior guy or there's a, just a back from each school.
Okay.
So, not all the teachers will be taking it.
Right.
But anyways, if that helps.
That's great, yeah, no, that makes a lot, yeah.
And if, if you don't have any, any thought or feedback, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's that.
Perfect, thank you. And the Kensington School Study Updates on Hiatus?
Yeah.
General Correspondence? We gotta do this first, yep, did that check? The Communication and Community Engagement?
Yeah, so the survey's out in the world, I posted it on Facebook today, if I can, onto Facebook.
Yeah, that's right, I think we're locked up, yeah.
Yeah, um, so, if you guys, if you see that and wanna just, like, engage with it so that it.
Bumps it up?
Yeah.
Okay, is it on the Kensington?
It's on the Kensington Connects.
Okay.
I, maybe there's a, a school that can post it into. But anyway, so the, it's a, it's a five-minute survey to take. And it's about how, um, the SU sixteen central office communicates information to the whole community. So, not just, um, students, but sort of everyone in.
Yeah.
The towns, um, and it's open until the end of February, so there's a lot of time to do it.
Okay, that's great.
It's quick, so it's, it's an easy thing, which is to sort of share with people that you know. The more people take it, the better, the more we should all get out of it.
I should know the answer to this question, did Kristen send that out via email to?
I haven't seen it yet.
Is, is she supposed to?
I don't think it came from each school, it was, it would've gone through Sharon Gullidge. She sent it out to all community members and that we had it at public places for QR codes to get it.
So, Sharon sent it to all, all SU sixteen families?
We had talked about doing up a, um, a paper, one that went home for the elementary. But I don't know if that, I can check in with Sharon to see if that was gonna happen, um.
I just wasn't sure if we were supposed to get it out to our families, cause I don't remember doing that.
Yes, we, I got something from Sharon that went to all the joint board members, but it was just.
General public.
Yeah, no.
I think the conversations have it come from Sharon, cause it was about the SAU.
Right.
And we didn't want individual administrative assistants setting it out, cause then they would rate it based on that school.
Yeah, cause it's really supposed to be about the, the central office, not about the elementary school. Yeah, yeah.
And then the Community News Submission, we are, we're on it, I promise, it's due Friday. And so, Steph and I can work together, I just want you to edit, cause you're probably better writer than I am. And so, we're gonna do something very similar to what we did last year. I think we'll probably, um, shorten it a little bit, cause it's, our goals are different and, um, but, yep.
Is somebody taking minutes of the meeting? Did I, I don't know if I blinked and missed it, but Josh made a motion. And you seconded Stephanie, you seconded it, did you vote on it?
Sometimes we do it quiet.
We do it very quickly, yeah.
Yeah, it was quiet, okay.
But I capture them all right here, as well.
We're the most subdued school board of all time, so, yeah. Principals Report?
Yep, so, the first thing that I wrote about under Positive Community Culture was, um, just highlighting our Kindness Week. That's gonna be coming up at the end of this month. Um, it's a national campaign, the Grace, Great Kindness Challenge. And that's, um, being led by our fourth grade students this year. So, they're developing, um, different activities and things for the students to engage in that week. So, I think that'll be starting, uh, the week of the twenty-second. So, you'll hear more about that in the weeks to come. Um, under Meaningful Learning, I was just highlighting some of the things that our adorable little first graders are doing is they are becoming such great little readers and writers. Um, the second half of first grade is such a growth for them. They're starting, um, to do an author study of Jan Breck, which is a very popular author here in the winter. She wrote The Mitten and the Hat and, um, lots of fun things that our first graders are doing with those books. Um, they're also diving into some opinion writing, um, based on the why does the pigeon need to go to bed? And they are developing their own reasons about bedtime. So, again, just really trying to make learning and writing meaningful for first graders. And bedtime, they have a lot to say about, so. You know, really tricking them on how to defend an opinion when you're in first grade, but they can do it when it comes to bedtime. And then, under Health and Wellbeing, I was just highlighting, um, kinda how busy our nurses' office is on a daily basis. From the beginning of the year, she's had over seventeen hundred visits. Some of those are planned, some of those are not planned.
Number makes no sense.
From, since school started in August.
That's insane.
Yep, seventeen of those have been staff, or nineteen of those have been staff visits. So, you know, all seventeen hundred haven't been all children, just sixteen hundred or so.
Are you doing the math right? This is crazy to me, some of your my children.
So, it's sometimes a busy place. I mean, there's, she's, she's, uh, she's sometimes got a line and, um, some days are busier than others. So, it's just another call for trying to stay healthy and keeping kids home when they have fevers and all that good hand washing stuff that we got good at a few years ago. Just being mindful that, um, the health office can, can be pretty busy on some days, so. Then the other part that I was reporting on this month was social emotional learning.
Thank you.
So, when we're looking at social emotional learning, we refer to it SEL. As I was going through, I'm like, there's a lot of acronyms, SEL, MTSS, there's just all of these acronyms for things. So, the multi-tiered system of support for social emotional learning, we look at it in tiers. So, tier one is that core instruction. That's every student in the building receives tier one core SEL instruction. That's things like going over our school-wide expectations and morning meetings and our, our cares, the cooperation, advocacy, resilience, empathy, solving problems, um, open circle, responsive classroom. So, these are things that all students do, um, in their classrooms, either with their classroom teacher or with Ms. Escolin when they see her on a rotating basis. Tier two are those sort of supplemental SEL instructions. And, and we have thirty-eight percent of our students working in small groups or during lunch bunches, um, with Ms. Escolin throughout the week. Um, and they work on things like conflict resolution, positive growth mindset, problem solving, self-awareness, social interactions. You can see a comparison from last year, that, that's, the number is up just a little bit. Last year was thirty-five percent of students working on that tier two. This year, we're at thirty-eight percent, so that's up just a little bit of Ms. Escolin's customers. Then on the next pages, that is the tier three. And that's fourteen percent of our students receiving more intensive SEL instruction, um, with Ms. Escolin. That's usually done one-on-one, in a one-on-one setting with her. Um, and they include topics that are more individualized for students. So, that might be anxiety or specific peer relationships, um, self-esteem, that sort of thing. So, those one-on-one sessions are really more individualized and personalized for that. Um, you can also see on that tier three supports, we are, um, up a little bit as well. Last year, ten percent of students receiving tier three, um, SEL. And this year, fourteen percent of students, so that number has increased as well. Um, referrals for school counseling have gone up as well. So, last year, we had eleven parent or guardian referrals. This year, to date, we've received sixteen. And then teacher referrals are at four to date right now. So, our referrals for counseling have, have increased a bit this year, as you can see.
And Becky, those would be the two means of essentially making your way into a tier two or tier three category, right?
Yep, yep, so that can go through referral. The other, um, way to kind of get to those tiers is what's, what's next? And as far as collecting data, we initially use the DESA, which, uh, parents are notified at the beginning of the year that will be doing this, um, this screening on students. And so, we take the information from the DESA, um, and then identify which students, you know, may get flagged based on the questions, um, on that screening. And then we may do some additional screening, depending, again, how, how the questions are answered. So, I have some, on the next few pages then is, um, some specific information about the DESA. So, here were, this first page was the pre-screening that we, we did earlier in the year, just as far as, um, where students came out, as far as, um, need typical or strength. So, we did, um, identify a few students who, who came out, um, as needing intervention in one of those other categories. And then the next page, that is more of a comparison from last year to this year. And again, we see a slight increase in the number of students needing, um, more direct instruction in, in our SEL components. So, a slight increase in the red, um, for us there. And then, um, the last page was, um, just showing those needs just based on, um, grade levels. So, overall, an increase in requests and students needing more direct SEL. And we are fortunate to have Mrs. Escolin here with us full-time.
Yeah.
Also a very busy lady.
What do these categories mean, Becky? Like, need for instruction, does that mean you're gonna hit tier two or tier three?
Yes, so if you, if you are flagged on the DESA, then you would have been notified by Ms. Escolin or the classroom teacher that your child was flagged on the DESA. Um, and then a plan would be, um, developed. Sometimes families choose to perhaps, um, look at outside counseling to, to fulfill those needs. Sometimes we look at that within the school. So, once a student is flagged, then a, a, a plan would be made for that individual child with the family as to what's best.
Okay, and then typical is what you would expect for SEL?
Yep.
Strength would be strong SEL, okay, got it. Thank you.
She's been able to handle that, hasn't she?
So far. And then she does have, um, kids that just sort of drop in sometimes too. And then she does have, um, kids that just sort of drop in sometimes, too, you know, it's a bad day, or, I lost my favorite boots, and these ones don't fit, and my hamsters, I mean, there's drop, you know? There's things that are just a daily sort of, I need to just talk to Ms. Eskelin, that is on a regular basis, but.
So, these numbers, and, these ones up front include kids that have IEPs or five oh fours, and that service is included in their IEP, for example, to see her?
Trying to think if, uh, if IEP hours are included on there. No.
Okay.
They are not. The social emotional calls on IEPs are generally not done, um, with Ms. Eskelin.
Okay.
They're done with other-
Providers?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
In general. There may be an exception here or there, but in general, not.
Okay. This is great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any new business?
Only question I would ask for the board is, we typically not scheduled a February meeting cause of the deliberative session. However, and we, I think we saw last year that March turned into a very long meeting, cause we hadn't reviewed policies, and we had a ton to review. So, I didn't know if the board wanted to schedule a, a quick board meeting, uh, to be able to at least do minutes, policies, and financials, so you're on board, and keep it to those three specific items, and we would have just a, a quick report from Ms. Rule, but keep it short, uh, it has to be at least a half hour, um, even before the deliberative session on the seventh.
I was gonna say, can we combine it with that?
We can, we could go if we went at five, that gives us, you know, time to be able to have our board meeting, and then go into deliberative at six. So, if you're amendable to that, I can make that change and, um, put that on our, if everyone's able to make it at five, knowing that our deliberative would be at six, so, a little reversal.
It's a party. Yeah. Yeah, pizza.
We can do that.
What date is the deliberative again?
Uh, February seventh, Wednesday, February seventh.
Okay.
What, are you okay with that, Josh?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Thank you, I just think that keeps us in a good flow, and it keeps our meetings, you know, where we're not here for hours. Alright, so we'll just, we'll go to that meeting, we'll know that we'll have a hard cap of five fifty-five to get to deliberative. And Harold will be all set up in the gym, so we could do our board meeting in here, and-
Okay.
Let's go straight on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you. That's all I had for new business.
Uh, any old business? There's nothing else?
No.
People-related matters?
Nope.
Personnel?
No.
We weren't good to close, public comment, so, um, anything else? Any discussions, any things? Are we good to make a motion to adjourn at six fifty-four? All in favor?